How's the house? This case is good. They're neat. We'll be done tomorrow.
Oh shoot, I didn't even get to look. I didn't even get to look to see yet.
All right, welcome everyone to the May 22nd Board of Supervisors meeting. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, and we have a series of special acknowledgements that we're going to start out with today for the Police Department, which should be exciting, and I'm going to hand things over to Chief Beatty.
I appreciate the time, Dr. Gussi, and the board's time and the public's time. Every once in a while, some special events happen that are worthy of the public recognition, and this is one of them tonight. We have accreditation presentation from the Pennsylvania Police Chiefs for accreditation effort, and we have a promotion ceremony for one of our officers moving to corporal. So, I'd like to start off, I can call up Mr. Jim Adams. Jim Adams is retired chief from Lower Allen. He's with the Program Coordinator for the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association. He represents the entire state, runs the program, accreditation program, which is something that we participate in, and Jim will talk a little bit about that. Next to Jim, I'd like to make sure I call up my team that was very active with this, Captain Tim Brown. Our accreditation manager was Tyler, Lieutenant Tyler Moyer, Jim Slaven, and Christina Johnson. We were also assisted by Sharon Rose, and actually, this is a whole agency accomplishment. All the officers in the organization, our administrative staff, and also township staff, Public Works included, helped us to get through to all those different phases that we needed to get for accreditation. But I'm also going to give at the end of the day, I'm going to give some time to, we had some outside assistance from a sparing consultant group, which is John String and Madeline Lewis, and they're also in the back, so I'll acknowledge them after Chief Adams' comments. So, floor is yours, sir. Thank you.
There we go, okay. Thank you very much. I want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to come and publicly recognize the Police Department and the accomplishment they made with accreditation. And if I may, just very quickly, more so for the public that's here and maybe on Zoom, to be aware of what accreditation is, and I'm not going to go through the entire program, that would take me all night, and I'm more than happy to do that, but I'm sure you have some other things that you want to get to. But the key thing is, this is not an accomplishment for life. It's not a certificate for life, it's not a sticker for life. A lot of hard work went into it. I checked the file before I left the office today. The Police Department initially signed up for it back in 2012. It's very common that police departments take five, 10, 15 years to become accredited because it is a long road, it is a very intensive road. And what accreditation is, we have right now 125 standards that by virtue of your Police Department becoming accredited can attest that they meet 125 best practices. Actually, it goes a little bit further than that because embedded in those 125 standards, there's another 245, what we call bullets or substandards, and really when you count them all up, they are applying, they are complying with 370 best practices in law enforcement. I go back a little bit in time, some of you may remember that eight, or a couple of our state legislators came together when there was a big push for police reform, and pushing for the eight can't wait initiatives for law enforcement. Eight initiatives that police departments, they wanted to institute right away. Well, all eight of those initiatives, police departments who are accredited were already doing long before it became the popular thing to do. So this puts a police department really on the cutting edge of best practices, much to the chagrin of the accreditation manager, our standards are always changing because new things are coming out. We do keep pace with legislative initiatives and also at the national level, too. And now, they just went through it, we sent two, for two days, three of our assessors were onsite here going through your agency policies, making sure that your written directives and policies comply with those 370 standards. But then there's an additional piece to it. We also require them to have what are called proofs of compliance. It's one thing to have an updated policy manual sitting on your shelf, but are the staff actually following it? So that's the other component. They have to have proofs of compliance for every one of those 370 standards. So now that they got it, in three years, they're going to be going through it again because this certificate that I'm going to present tonight has an expiration date. Annually, the Police Department will be submitting a very detailed report, basically doing a self-assessment and a testing that they are still complying with all of the standards, send that into my office on an annual basis, and like I said, in three years, I'll be arranging for three new assessors to come and spend a day with your Police Department to evaluate and reassess. The one thing I'd like to mention, too, people say, well, what's the advantage of accreditation? Insurance companies are recognizing that a police department that is accredited is actually doing risk management. The studies are showing when you compare comparable police departments, those that are accredited are getting sued less often than those police departments that aren't accredited. And when a police department that is accredited gets sued, the payouts are significantly less. It's not my position to tell you to make sure your insurance company's giving you a discount now that you're accredited, but seriously, a lot of insurance companies are because they do recognize the fact that by virtue of accreditation, you are attuned to risk management. I could stand up here and talk all night long, those standards that I mentioned, if you're interested, and if you're interested in learning more about accreditation, certainly talk to your Police Department representatives, but we have in the public-facing webpage, anybody can log on to Pennsylvania Chiefs, and there's an accreditation tab. Those 125 standards with all the substandards are all listed there. If you're interested in looking at them, you can see what your Police Department is complying with. So, at this time, I'd like to publicly present the accreditation certificate on behalf of the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police, recognizing that your Police Department is now an accredited agency. Make 150 accredited agencies, there's over 1,100 police departments in Pennsylvania, only 150 of them, yours being one of those 150 is accredited. So thank you for your time, and Chief, whoever you want me to present the certificate to.
They're right there with you.
If the board wants to get a photograph, we'd love to post it on our webpage because we know the board supports the Police Department.
At this time, I'd like to ask John String, our consultant lead, and Madeline Lewis to step up.
I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors, almost still a minute or two here in the public. Chief Adams kind of gave you the depth of the program and what work went into this. And while we had the pleasure of working with the Police Department, we were honored to do so, we wanted to take a minute to recognize the hard work. Because the Chief talked about the standards and having the policy manual, but it really comes down to the men and women of the Police Department that are out there doing the right thing on a daily basis. Because if it isn't for them, it doesn't matter what support you have, if the work's not being done, there's no way that you can prove it's being done correctly. So in respect of that, we want to present this plaque to the Police Department, just in honor of the work that the men and women of the Tridifferent Police Department did to ensure that they were accredited.
Thank you very much, that's really appreciated. It really is a combined effort, and it was a real, real big push. But once again, Lieutenant Moyer really stepped up, beginning back March of last year, we jumped into this program and really started ramping up our efforts. We've been rewriting policies for a couple of years, but we went to the accreditation manager program in March of 2022, and within a year's time, all the department went through all the policies, all the changes, didn't miss a beat, kept up with everything, and we were able to work with our consultants to help make sure the policies were correct, that the proofs were there, and I can't thank the department, and I, once again, the township because there is other facilities involved, there's Public Works, accounting, township manager, and the board. So thank you, everybody, for helping us get through this process, and I really appreciate it. If I could roll right in, we have a promotion ceremony I'd like to jump into. If I could ask Chris Middleton to step up with his family. Come up to the front, please. All right, we got, we have his wife Amber, we have Ava and Casey and Colin, and want them to be part of this, but beginning in January of this year, we posted we had a retirement, so Corporal Bob Reynolds, I believe I saw him earlier, is he here? Bob Reynolds recently retired, thank you for your service of years here. Bob retired, and we opened up a corporal position, process was undertaken, and these processes are also, they're methodical, they include a written examination, oral interviews, but one of the biggest components that we've instituted is a peer review, which is weighted 30%. And in that, that peer review, what's important is the officers are evaluated by their other sergeants, all the sergeants in the department, on their accessibility, accountability, their leadership, their attention to detail, their activity. And each of the officers gets a grade, and it goes into their combined score for the written and the oral. And of course, because he's before you now, Chris Middleton came out top on our last process. Chris has been with the Police Department for six and a half years, serving in the Patrol Division, he's a field training officer. Prior to joining our department, he served in the Northtown Police Department and Lower Chichester Police Department. And what's interesting also, Chris's father, Mike Middleton, is in the audience, a former police officer here in Tridifferent, with his mom Rita, and I believe sister Jessica is here, so thank you for your continued support of the family. At this point, we're going to have Amber pin his corporal badge on corporal, well, hands might be full. All right, maybe we'll just hand it over. Okay, all right, and while they're up there, it's a great family photo, this kind of rolls into, for the last, we have an Officer of the Year identification each year. The supervisors, once again, they look at the performance of the officers within the ranks of the department. This year, now Corporal Christopher Middleton will be recognized as the Officer of the Year for 2022, 2023, and we'd like to do that presentation. Officer Middleton, one of the write-ups that came in, it should be known that in 2022, he was our PA DUI Coalition, he was the top, one of the top award winners for DUI arrests across the state for his performance there. He leads our department in several arrest categories and activity. He just, he's one of those persons that has a motor, he's going out, he's doing the work day in and day out. Somebody really makes, if you're a resident of Tridifferent, you want him on the street, which all officers do, but he's out there just going at extra, extra step every day, and we can't thank him enough. I think it's really important, this award is, once again, selected by his peers of the department, and it's a great acknowledgement, and I believe also his father was recognized years ago as Officer of the Year, so it comes from a good cut. So congratulations, Chris, thank you for your service and dedication. We have one more photo, one more photo up, up there with the actual certificate. Thank you for the board's time, public's time, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, congratulations Corporal Middleton, and congratulations on the accreditation. It was fun to be able to see a glimpse of that process when I came by, I know it was a ton of work, so really great work. All right, we are going to move on in the agenda, and I'm going to call to order a public hearing to consider and possibly adopt Resolution 202314 approving the transfer of restaurant liquor license number R21423 into Tridifferent Township from Mendon Hall, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Ms. Fuller.
Thank you. We'll start by marking the exhibits, the board exhibits for this hearing. The notice for the public hearing will mark as Exhibit B1. Exhibit B2 is the affidavit of publication confirming that the notice was published in the Daily Local on April 27th and May 4th, 2023. Exhibit B3 is the email distribution list for the public hearing notice, and Exhibit B4 is the proposed resolution to be considered by the board this evening. And then finally, Exhibit 5 is the letter dated April 21, 2023, from Paul L. Heron to Aaron McPherson requesting the intermunicipal transfer of the liquor license. With that, Mr. Heron?
Yes.
Certainly.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Paul Heron. I represent the applicant Takumi Cup, which trades as Takumi, it's a Pennsylvania corporation, and they're seeking to obtain a resolution for transfer of this license from Mendon Hall Township. The corporate principals of my client are here tonight, Eddie Zhang and Yvonne Yang, if you could just stand up. They have been involved in a number of enterprises, restaurants, in a variety of states, Pennsylvania, New York, New Jersey, Maryland, Florida, restaurants that are both full service and quick service. Eight of those restaurants are located in the Philadelphia area and employ approximately 100 people. Two of them have liquor licenses already, one of them in Center City and one of them in University City. I have, the restaurant concept is a Japanese restaurant, and I have a menu, if I could just offer that for your... You'll notice that the menu is wide-ranging with a variety of price points. The location where they're opening the restaurant, in fact, they expect to be opening it within the next month or so, they've completed most of the renovations. It's located in Devon Village, it replaces a Mexican restaurant, which by the way, also had a liquor license. They've leased the building, it's 3,900 square feet. As I say, renovations are just about completed, they've spent approximately $200,000 on renovations. The seating capacity of the restaurant is about 173 patrons, 10 of those seats would be for bar seating, very limited bar seating. There is also an outside patio with approximately 200 square feet, a small area, but there is a possibility of outdoor dining in that small area. Their hours of operation will be from 11:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday, and they will be employing approximately 10 different employees. There will be a designated manager who will receive responsible alcohol management training from the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, and that individual will be approved by the Liquor Board to serve in that capacity. All sellers and servers will also receive ramp training, they will have a very limited sale of takeout beer, no more than two six-packs or 192 fluid ounces may be sold in any one transaction. There are security cameras located on the premises, and in some, they've made a substantial investment that will be protected by responsible management and well-trained employees. Based upon all of that, I respectfully request that the board issue a resolution approving the transfer of the license into the township. And as I say, my clients are here if there are any additional questions, but I think I've tried to give you a pretty good idea of what, what we're looking at. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to adopt Resolution 202314?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, do we have any board comments or questions?
Did you say that the existing, I guess the Mexican restaurant that was there previously had a liquor license?
That's my understanding, yes.
Thanks.
All right.
Is this the old location where Lembretta was? Lembretta, yeah, by Whole Foods. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? All right, just give a second, nothing online? All right, hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Humble?
Aye.
Supervisor Holt?
Aye.
Supervisor Westacki?
Aye.
Supervisor Freed?
Aye.
Supervisor Basker?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And I'm going to close the public hearing, thank you, and call to order the public meeting. We have two announcements tonight. In observance of Memorial Day, township offices will be closed Monday, May 29th. The Pugh Road culvert replacement project is complete, the road reopened on May 1st, this is very exciting. And now we will move to the motion to approve minutes of the April 17th, 2023 public meeting.
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And we also have a motion to approve minutes of the May 8th, 2023 special public meeting.
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, and we move to township business. The board met an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel matters. We have supervisor liaison reports tonight. We'll start with Supervisor Miller.
Thank you very much. The zoning hearing board met on May 9th to discuss putting a Wawa on 676, 656 Sweetsford Road, that's right across of Old Eagle School from Lifetime Fitness, if you know where that is, it's right in that corner. Pretty extensive and lively discussion, we had 15 people, residents expressed concerns, their concern including traffic, pollution from underground tanks and sinkholes in the area, crime, light pollution, decline of property values due to a 24/7 store, sufficient gas stations in the area. Interesting to note, there are four Wawas and 28 gas stations within five miles of that location, so there's a lot more stuff than you would think. And people didn't want it to like to cob Pike on Sweetsford Road, so those are the opposition. We have one person speak in favor of how convenient it would be, and the zoning hearing board will render a decision at their next meeting, which is the 25th of May, which is this Thursday at 7:00 p.m. Also, we'd like to appoint Brad Murphy as an alternate member to the zoning hearing board, it's like an off-field motion to appoint Brad as an alternate to the zoning hearing board. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes my report, thank you.
All right, Supervisor Humble?
Thank you. The Parks and Recs Board met on May 10th here in Keene Hall, 7:00 p.m. In addition to the police reports that we always get at each meeting, one of them, to me, stood out is that at Stratford Park, signs that were missing all over the park that said like no dumping and where people couldn't go, and some of the people around surmised that it was probably removed by kids and adults angry that one of these bandit bike paths had been created throughout the wooded area there, and it had gotten bulldozed by the township because it was put there without permission. Another one that was rather interesting at Stratford Park was there was a well-being check of a man in his car who was plugged in to one of the electric poles there to power up his video games in his car. The peace poll that I reported on earlier has gone up in Wilson Farm Park, it's near the children's playground, the tot lot, so if you see it, you know, go over and take a look at it and read all the different languages that peace is written in. The Parks and Rec Board also considered the master plan process for Friendship Park, if there were to be improvements at this park, and also heard different liaisons telling us how much, how the deer management report had gone through the fall and through the winter, about field scheduling, Parks Foundation, and we also heard that Public Works for Tridifferent had been getting with the baseball teams to help instruct them with best practices for how to clear the fields after rainstorms. Another thing that had happened in the past week, so was not considered by the board, and Chief Beatty, please fill in or correct me if I'm wrong, there were two dog attacks at Teagarden Park in the past week. One happened last Tuesday, another one happened this past Sunday. And in the one on Tuesday, it was a brown pit bull that attacked a dog while the owner was holding her dog, and it bit her arm, her forearm, and then when she dropped the dog, it severely mangled her little dog, which had to have emergency surgery right then, and then I think a day later, may not make it. I'm impressed that Tridifferent Police were at the dog park 7:30 a.m. the next morning. Detective was there, McFadden, I believe it was, talking to the different dog owners because a couple of them had fled, and, but he was able, I mean, this is amazing detective work, they were able to find out from talking to different people and whatever their other detective methods are, and found the owners of one of the dogs that had done the attacking. And then on Sunday morning, there was another dog attack, and it turns out it was the same pit bull off-leash that, in a very similar fashion, that attacked somebody who, there was kind of a skirmish between the dogs, and she tried to pick up her dog and leave the area, instead the dog bit her arm. And this time, this dog owner apparently stayed, EMS had to be called to the site, and the owner is being cited for the two different dog attacks. Chief Beatty did inform me that at this point for, I guess they call it the dog management is under contract to Brandywine SPCA, so whatever would happen with the dog going forward, it will be their decision. So, several people have asked, and there is no first bite is free law in Pennsylvania. So it's, it's not like this dog was entitled to a first bite and then the second time. But it bothers me that the owner knew her dog attacked somebody so viciously, and another dog, and she came back within the week, and she could have been back every day, this is just, she just happened to get caught. So that is, that is definitely a concern of the people who use the park and the neighbors, and I just want to make the public aware of this, so hopefully this stops. I know there are so many responsible pet owners in this township who use the parks correctly, who truly do have control of their dogs when they're off-leash, and we don't want like one bad apple to spoil the barrel. So that concludes my part of the report. We do have, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Patty Copeland to the Parks and Rec Board. Patty has attended at least one meeting of the Parks and Rec Board and shown a great deal of enthusiasm for it, and I think she's very well-qualified and, you know, definitely has the enthusiasm that we need.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Do you have any more to report on? Supervisor Humble?
No.
All right, we'll move to Supervisor Holt.
No report this evening.
All right, Supervisor Waisaki?
Thank you, Chair Gussi. I have two reports, one on the pension trustees and another on two meetings of the Planning Commission. The pension trustees met on May tenth for their quarterly review of Police Pension Fund, the four fifty-seven plan for non-uniform employees, and the OPEB Trust. After examining first quarter performance data and future economic and market projections, the trustees concluded that no significant changes in investment strategy were needed. The trustees did, however, decide to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the township's current assumed rate of return of seven and one-quarter percent be changed to seven percent. That change is in keeping with the current views of economists and market experts, as well as the positions of a number of municipalities. The pension trustees will send a memo to the board with their recommendation. Now I'd like to move the reappointment of Dick Bythe to another term as pension trustee. Dick has served the township well for many years and is the senior pension trustee.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Next is the Planning Commission. There were two meetings, April twentieth and May eighteenth. Commission discussed and heard citizen comment on three matters at its April twenty meeting. First, the Planning Commission considered the township's proposed woodland conservation ordinance, and then the commission, and the commission then voted to recommend the ordinance to the Board of Supervisors for approval. Second, the Planning Commission reviewed the sketch plan application to divide twenty-two thirty-four Georgetown Drive into three lots. The commission then advised the applicant that it needed more information citing stormwater and utilities easement issues and other commission and citizen concerns. Lastly, the Planning Commission considered the sketch plan application to divide one oh eight North Valley Road into two lots. The Planning Commission advised the applicant to revise and resubmit the plan as it created two non-compliant lots, as well as no hardship for zoning relief from the zoning hearing board. At its May eighteenth meeting, the commission discussed and heard citizen comment on two matters. First, the Planning Commission voted to provide a letter of support to the Board of Supervisors for the board's application for a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program state grant for a proposed pump bike track on a portion of Mill Road Park. Second, the Planning Commission continued until June, until its June meeting, the application of the Delaware Valley Friends School for Final Land Development Approval for expansion of its campus facilities. The commission emphasized that there were no problems with the approval, but just a few minor matters to be addressed. The next meeting of the Planning Commission is on June fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Freed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, I just have some nominations to make with regard to the Historical Commission. As I've talked about in the past, the Historical Commission, under the leadership of the chairman, Rob Williams, has really been putting together a great team for the Historical Commission. There's two folks that are up for, their terms are about to end, and they both have agreed to re-up and continue on with their jobs, which is a great relief. I know to Rob and me, because they've done such a great job and are really a big part of the team now, the first is Pearl Nudi and the second is Mark Dixon. I'd ask that we reappoint both of those people.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, we will move to Supervisor Basker.
So I would like to start by making a motion to appoint Ann Murphy to be, to complete Doug Anistad's term on the Environmental Advisory Council, so.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
So I have a few words to say, which is that I think that if anyone really, you know, deserves this position, or, you know, it's Ann. The first time I met her was out in Wilson Farm Park, and we were out there talking about invasive plants, and I thought I knew a lot about invasive plants, and it turns out that I only know about one percent compared to what she knew. And there's a whole lot that she knew about, you know, how to control them and so on. So she's been an associate member, and I'm really glad that she's volunteered to step up to be a full member of the EAC. And so, thank you, Ann, and I'm happy to, you know, answer any questions about my recommendation.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
I do. I just want to say I think Ann Murphy is terrific. She has been so present at different Parks and Rec Board meetings on behalf of EAC issues. I thought she was already a member, and she's very, very knowledgeable about all the different aspects, and certainly her participation is a matter of the heart, and I really welcome that, to Tridifferent. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Ann has done so much for our township. She also co-chaired the Stormwater Task Force, so she's a huge asset. I also am very excited to move her as a full member. So with that, why don't we go ahead and vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so now I can move on to the rest of my report. So the Environmental Advisory Council met on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth. There was a discussion and an update about a topic discussed at the Parks and Recreation Board about reducing plastic waste from water bottles at major events such as the five-k run at Wilson Farm Park, and there were many ideas. The issue is in front of the Parks and Rec Board at the moment. They also did routine maintenance adjustments on the library rain garden. The first twenty-twenty-three spring rain garden installation went in today, and the second, and that was in Peoli. The second installation is scheduled for June third, and that will be in Devon. There was a Crabby Creek macroinvertebrate study on May twentieth, on Saturday, and I think we had participation from members of the community, including some Girl Scout troops. I hope they had a lot of fun. They certainly found a lot of, you know, macroinvertebrates. And currently, they're finalizing a location for monitoring instrumentation, and once that's finalized, they'll basically talk to the township and also apply for a grant to install this monitoring station for permanently monitoring the salinity and other composition of the waters of Crabby Creek. And so, and then also over the weekend, EAC members and two Conestoga interns removed eighteen thirty-gallon bags of invasive garlic mustard from Crabby Creek Park. Now, I'm told that that makes excellent pesto. I've never tried it myself, but I hope they had a chance to try it. But it is, garlic mustard is an invasive species, and, you know, if you see any in your backyard, now's a good time to pull it out. There was a successful Earth Day planting event at Wilson Farm Park. We'd like to thank the thirty-one volunteers, and there's also, they're working on setting up a no-mow area around the plantings to protect them, and also with signage explaining that it is a no-mow area and that, you know, it wasn't that the Public Works forgot to mow the area. And then, moving on, Chester County Solid Waste Authority may have some grants to help townships with the transition to single hauler. They also suggested a dumpster in Wilson Farm Park in a central location so people can put their Christmas trees to be composted. Right now, a lot of Christmas trees end up in landfill. And again, you know, Ann stepped up to fill the term of Doug Anistad. I want to express my thanks to Doug Anistad for the work that he put in and the tremendous energy he put into the Environmental Advisory Council, and, you know, we'll certainly miss him on the EAC. So the next meeting of the EAC is tomorrow, and it's in the community room next door at seven p.m. Moving on to the Library Board of Trustees, it met on Thursday, April twenty-seventh, and we welcome the new director, Mallory Halfman. We're very glad to have her. As you know, the library building, the Stratford building, has had some problems with the HVAC, so the upgrade has started, and then after they started working on it, they found some new issues, and in fact, there was a problem with the air conditioning, which resulted in the library being closed on April sixth, and construction of the roof was scheduled to start on May eighth, but I believe it is now expected to start on Wednesday. And then, you know, just continuing the trend, daily attendance continues to increase every month in both locations, Stratford and Peoli, and overall circulation also continues to increase, although it still remains below the pre-pandemic level, but e-material circulation continues to grow quite actively. And the programs that are offered and the attendance is also slowly increasing, and the children's programming team are getting ready for an active summer with participation from a lot of kids, so that should be a lot of fun. And then also in the Peoli Library, Willistown Township is paying for upgrade of the light fixtures in the reading area and downstairs with their ARPA funding. And in case, not everyone may realize it, but the library is actually partially funded by Willistown Township, as well as, you know, Tridifferent, of course, is the major fund it, but Willistown doesn't have their own library, and Peoli essentially fills that role. The next meeting of the Library Board of Trustees will be this Thursday at seven p.m. in the Stratford Library. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you, Dr. Gussi.
All right, thank you. We will move to the motion to approve the subdivision plan for ten fourteen Leopard Road and seven West Golf Club Lane. Ms. McPherson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So this application, it's been before you before. Last month, it actually came in for the map change. If you remember, this property is an existing property. The commercial, there's a portion of the property, it's a couple parcels that make up the commercial part. Part of their parking lot for the commercial lot is on a residential property. So this proposed subdivision and consolidation will basically consolidate the commercial lots and then subdivide off so the residential portion will only be the residential portion. The parking lot will go to the commercial parcel. Again, this was at the board last month for the map change. This follows the map change for the commercial and residential parcels. The applicant's attorney is here if there's any other questions.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any board comments or questions? Any public comments or questions? All right, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We will next move to the motion to approve proposal for a network detective assessment tool. Mr. Duraco?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a request for a three-year commitment for testing on our network firewall, et cetera, our cybersecurity to help beef that up. Our IT director looked at a couple different options. This was, you know, his recommendation, so I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any board comment?
Yes, Dr. Gussi. So I did have an exchange of emails with the IT director about this vendor. It turns out this is a vendor that we have already been using, and this is, I guess, getting a license to work with that software. I will note that the vendor has, called Casaya, has been, it's a matter of public record, that they have not, have been not as careful about their security and responsibility as they should have, should have been. The standards in the industry are basically, when you have responsible disclosure of a security vulnerability, that you have ninety days to repair it, and they did not fix all of the vulnerabilities in twenty-twenty-one, which resulted in thousands of customers being, having problems. Now, I understand that since then, they have taken responsibility for their actions and they're doing better. And again, this is software that we're already, this vendor's software is something we're already using. So I have done my investigation, and I believe this is the appropriate purchase at this time, but again, I'm not endorsing this wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Any other board comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. This, I think, anyone who's been following the news or looks at, particularly in the municipal world, looking at the various municipal magazines, sees that municipalities and governments and local governments and even state and federal governments are one of the prime targets for cybersecurity attack issues. To me, this is, this falls in the category of an ounce of prevention, and seems like it's resources well-spent that could prevent us from having to spend a lot of other resources in trying to rebuild something once it's lost.
Thank you. Any other board comments or questions? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to approve the emergency sewer project on Valley Green Road. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. On April twenty-fourth, Public Works was notified by a plumber doing work at sixteen-twenty-one Valley Green Road. It may be an issue with our sanitary line. Crews went out, they did a video inspection, and during that inspection, they noticed that there were several offsets in the pipe, which had also caused a large depression in a resident's yard. We contacted PJ Riley. They came out, we came up with a plan. Because the main, because the line is a major trunk area, we did emergency repairs to the main. PJ Riley replaced about twenty feet of sanitary sewer. It was a little over fourteen feet deep. The price of these repairs were twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Request.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any board comment?
Yes, I have a question. I know we had several emergency sewer repairs last year. How many have we had this year, including this latest one?
Believe we're, that was our second one.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any public comment? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to authorize capital purchase of a truck for Public Works. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Staff is requesting the approval of a utility truck used with the MS four program. This truck will be outfitted with a four-thousand-pound extendable crane to remove the inlet tops, all the signage needed for roadwork and tools required for the inlets. We'll also use this vehicle as a shadow vehicle for the safety of the crew while they're out working. Currently, when we go out, we send a backhoe out with another crew. We want to keep the backhoes available for other work. That's why we're getting the truck with the crane. The chassis will be purchased from Hundra Ford of Mannheim for sixty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars, and the body from Lancaster Truck Bodies for sixty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. Both purchases are through Co-Stars and were included in its twenty-twenty-three budget. If you have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to authorize reallocation of ARPA funds. Mr. Duraco?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Originally, when the board approved allocating our ARPA funds, we had set aside two hundred thousand dollars to essentially, you know, move the park at Stratford Park from where it is at its current location behind the library to the lower lot and use the existing green space behind the parking lot. Unfortunately, Unfortunately, Steve had a MS4 project that he was planning on doing on the lower playing fields, that just, the land's just not suitable for that project. So he's looking at using that space that we were going to use for the playground for his project, and therefore, we needed to move that money. And what we discussed in the Finance Committee and had discussion with Supervisor Humble as well, was moving, reallocating those funds, that $200,000 from Stratford Park to the Gregory Lane Phase 1 Stormwater Project. Just as a reminder, if there's any questions on the detail of that project, Steve obviously can answer it better than I can. But that project will be work in, essentially with Jenkins Arboretum and Gregory Lane. So we're tying it in with, you know, open space use. A lot of our residents use Jenkins to walk, and again, as a recreational use. So I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. And for those who don't know, ARPA is American Rescue Plan Act. Yes? All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any board comment?
Yes, I just, I just want to assure the public, this is not as if 200,000 is being moved from park improvements at Stratford Park. It was always allocated for stormwater improvements that would have occurred at Stratford Park. So it's not as if the park is losing money for improvements in favor of stormwater. It's one stormwater project that can't be fulfilled. That money going instead to fulfill a stormwater control project that we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Any public comments? All right. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to adopt Resolution 202315 affirming Tridifern Township's participation in the Sustainable Pennsylvania Community Certification Program. Mr. Duraco.
Is this letter J?
Oh, Supervisor Baskar.
Thank you, Dr. Gossi. So basically, this is something that comes out of the Environmental Advisory Council, and we've had presentations on it, at least one presentation at the Board of Supervisors meeting, and I've mentioned it before. So this is a plan where if we, basically Penn Environment has these levels of, there's like a bronze and a silver and a gold. So if you go through checkmarks, and we believe the township is already meeting most of these requirements for the bronze level. And so what we really need to do is sort of go through the checkmarks and submit that, and then once we get the certification, we will actually have, you know, when we apply for grants, for example, from the Department of National Resources and other agencies, they will actually look and see whether we have the certification, and then that will kind of be a point in our favor when awarding grants. And the first step to that is basically this resolution, which basically affirms that we're participating in the Sustainable Pennsylvania, you know, Community Certification Program. And as I said, right now, for the bronze level, it's primarily one of going through and making sure that we have all of the boxes checked, and this is one of the boxes that we need to check. And then once you have the certification, it's good for three years. And during the three years, you can, you know, if you qualify, you can move up to silver, but you won't, you won't move down. So I think this is a good thing to pass and to act on.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Sorry, so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any board comments or questions? Any public comment? All right. Hearing none, this one is a roll call vote. Supervisor Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Humble.
Aye.
Supervisor Holt.
Aye.
Supervisor Wasaki.
Aye.
Supervisor Freed.
Aye.
Supervisor Basker.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to adopt Resolution 202316 affirming Tridifern Township's condemning hateful acts. This resolution in front of us was developed in collaboration with the newly-formed TE Jewish Connection Group in response to the recent anti-Semitic vandalism in our township, which we firmly denounced in the strongest way. And I'm going to hand things over to Supervisor Freed to talk about the resolution. He took the lead on writing the resolution, and I thank him for that.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So just by way of a little bit of background, and a lot of people may know this, in the last couple of weeks, there's been a couple incidents of anti-Semitic graffiti being spray painted around the township. And I appreciate the kind words about me taking the lead. I think the way this unfolded is, originally, it was, at least on the board, it was Supervisor Miller, as well as Supervisor Gossi, who both, once they heard about this, immediately reacted, said, "We have to come up with a very strong statement." I'm talking within probably, maybe not even hours, but minutes of finding out about this. And that got the ball rolling on our end, from the Board of Supervisors. I think it's also important to know that from the very beginning, and I'm going to talk about even before the very beginning, the police department and the police chief has been very actively engaged in responding to these incidents. But I think more importantly, and I know that the chief prefers to be under the radar, so I won't go into it too much, but I can tell you, just for years now, I know the chief has worked tirelessly in working with all the communities in the township and making sure that they're safe. I think to say that he and his department and the police officers are vigilant is probably an understatement. They're constantly working in ways that we don't see in protecting all the residents, and particularly those folks that are particularly vulnerable. So I want to thank the chief, I want to thank his command staff and all the police officers. And I think most importantly, and the thing that I think really speaks to this township is the response from the community. Right away, when these events happened, the community immediately came together, mobilized. I think Chairman Gossi mentioned, and I call it the TE Parent, Jewish Parents Group, I'm sure that, I know that's not the official name, but came together, reached out to the township, started working amongst themselves to come up, both react to the heinous acts, but also start trying to publicize the positives about, you know, why, you know, these things shouldn't happen. We also, Howard Griffl, who's here, I know other folks here, Lisa's here, my good friend, and I'm proud to say my Rabbi, Rabbi Kaplan is here. They all came together, and even without the board's action, were taking action and publicizing and being reactive and then proactive. So while we sit up here as a board, maybe making public pronouncements and doing some things to bring attention to this, it was really the community that immediately responded and is really where the real action and positive action is taking place. So what we have tonight is a resolution that really, it goes through, it references some of the anti-Semitic activity. It also is not just about anti-Semitic. I think, you know, I'm not a, I'm not an all lives matter kind of guy, but I do recognize that there's lots of different types of hate, they're all unique, they're all insidious in their own way. We wanted to focus on antisemitism, but we didn't want to forget the other types of hate that are out there that we have seen in recent years as well. So this resolution really tries to focus on both antisemitism and the other types of hate. It recognizes that there is a definition of antisemitism from the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance, that it's proposed in this resolution that the township adopt that definition as the formal definition of antisemitism for the township. There are also a number of anti-hate crime bills that are going through the General Assembly in Harrisburg. And this, again, this is a request, both these requests, both the definition and the and the request that we support, these anti-hate crime came directly, again, from the community, from the community folks, the community activists. And, you know, but we're, you know, if this passes, we're asking that these bills be supported, and this will become a public document that the General Assembly will see and know about. And finally, we ask that, you know, the township, that all Pennsylvanias and Tridifern Township residents speak up against hatred wherever they see it, so that we can create a more just, peaceful, and inclusive society for everyone. So that's essentially the resolution in a nutshell.
Thank you very much for taking us through it. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any other board comment?
I, oh, Chairman, Chair Gossi, I cannot match at all the eloquence of my fellow supervisor, Mark Freed, but I do have a couple of comments here. For me, our resolution gives a strong voice to the values of this board and our township. We condemn antisemitism and all other forms of hate. We will speak out against antisemitism and all other forms of hate, whenever and wherever we see them in our community. We stand for respect, peace, justice, and inclusivity for all. That's what this resolution is all about, in a nutshell. And I urge, if you haven't read it yet, please take the time, and it's, I'm so glad that all the work that went into the immediate response of our board, those members who worked on it, and those who worked on the resolution. And Mark, thank you again for your beautiful description of what this resolution is about. So thank you.
Supervisor Miller.
Wow, I'm not sure I can add much after that, but thank you. First, I want to thank Mark for the hard work on the resolution. I mean, it was, it's well-written, I think it expresses the outrage we all feel about what has happened. And I think as a board, what we've said is how outraged we are and how we want to condemn this in no uncertain terms. I was interviewed by the, spoke, the Conestoga newspaper, and the interviewee or interviewer, I guess, asked me, "What can you do to end these kind of acts?" And I'm like, "Well, as a board, it's really hard, it's sort of a police matter." I thought about it afterwards, and it really comes down to the things, was us expressing the outrage we feel, but also all the upwelling that's come from the community and the things that people are doing to say, none of us tolerate this. It's not just the board putting out the words, but it's all the community members speaking out, saying, "This is just not the values, this is a different township." And that's what made me feel like we're going to get this squashed by having people speak out and say, "It's just not acceptable to act this way, and it's not our values and it's not what we stand for." So anyway, I want to thank the community members who are speaking out, and I want to encourage you to keep speaking out, because that's really the only way we can really get this squashed. But thank you.
Any other board comments? Any public comments? If you'd like to speak, come on up to the mic and say your name and your address, and make sure you're speaking into the mic for the people at home.
My name is Lisa Schreiber. Where's my daughter? Here she is. I'm here with my daughter Ella. We're residents of Peoli. I just wanted to extend my truly heartfelt, sincere appreciation for the Board of Supervisors, Town Manager Martin, Superintendent Beatty, for your swift response and ongoing support to raise awareness against antisemitism here in Tridifern. As a Jewish family and a minority in the community, we've experienced microaggressions over the years, which frankly, were nothing compared to the shock of seeing swastikas emblazoned on our local buildings and street signs. In response to this, I formed a group called TE Jewish Connections that you referenced. It's a group of about 25 local Jewish families here in Tridifern East Town, and we've been having community discussions with the Board of Supervisors, the school district, the police, local interfaith communities, the Main Line Ministerium has been phenomenal, and state and local representatives, including Representative Melissa Schusterman. I'm so encouraged that the responses from all these groups have been welcoming and positive, and everybody agrees we have to stop this hate in its tracks. We can no longer say that we are immune as a community to the national uptick in antisemitism throughout the country. The Anti-Defamation League reports that just in Pennsylvania alone, there's been a 65% increase in anti-Semitic acts over the last few years. There's a statistic that we are 2% of the population, the Jewish community here in the U.S., yet we bear 55% of the hate crimes throughout the country. It's clearly here, unfortunately, right in our backyard, and we have to do something to address it right when it occurs. And your examples of both your announcement and this resolution speak to that. So thank you for your responsiveness in passing this, it means a great deal to our community. And we hope that this is going to be the start to a lot more community conversations to discuss these issues, and to stand firm and say that antisemitism will not live in Tridifern. So my daughter is a freshman at Conestoga High School, and she wanted to say a few words as well.
So as a Jewish girl at Conestoga, I think that student perspectives are very important. Many of the microaggressions and stereotypes that foster these criminal acts, such as the swastikas, are born within a school environment. I experience and overhear countless different messages of bias throughout my school day. Whether these acts are online, in school group chats, or in the classroom, these perceived humorous comments need to stop. We can see from recent events that this subtle discrimination can bloom into something worse. I fear for the safety of my family, and I fear for the safety of the generic Jewish community in Tridifern East Town. Antisemitism and other forms of bias are not just a national problem. Local communities need to combat them with education and policy. It is not enough to be aware, and it is certainly not enough to be silent. Thank you.
Let me begin by first thanking everyone that's here for their support, and the Board of Supervisors in particular, and David and Mark, who I've known for a really long time for different reasons. So my name is Howard Griffl. I am the one that, well, let me begin this way. My wife is the one that found the swastika on Chesterbrook Boulevard on April 20th at 1:14 p.m. Since all this evolved, I have come to understand that April 20th is Adolf Hitler's birthday. I only recently found that out, actually, and so it started to make a little bit more sense. But what happened was, she found it, and it was an act of God, literally, that minutes later, after I had been out doing errands for two hours, drove down Chesterbrook Boulevard, and I saw an unmarked police car with flashing lights. So I immediately slowed down, and I took a closer look, and I saw a policeman standing there with a woman. And as I got closer, I realized that the woman was my wife. So, I mean, my heart fell into my stomach, and I turned into the community parking driveway, and I came out and I said, "Are you all right?" And she didn't say a word, she just walked me over to the swastika. And I went nuts. Every emotion that you could possibly imagine went through my head and my body. So let me explain. I was born in a refugee camp in Germany in 1948. I came to these shores. I came to these shores on August 17th, 1950. We were placed in Newark, New Jersey by the HIAS, Hebrew Immigration Aid Society. It didn't matter where they placed us, because we had no friends and we had no family here. And I realized through this process that I experienced antisemitism from a very young age. They put us in a flat, and under that flat, on the corner of Bergen Street and Hawthorne Avenue, there was a candy store. And for some reason, I was the only child that wasn't allowed into the candy store. We were told that we lived upstairs and we made too much noise, but I have since come to understand that wasn't the reason. Jewish tradition has it that boys don't get their hair cut till they're three or four years old. So, I had curly, blond, strawberry blonde locks. I spoke a foreign language. I spoke Yiddish. And so, I was different, and that was the reason that I wasn't allowed in the store. And sometime later, my parents put me in Yeshiva, which is a Jewish day school, and one day I decided that I was gonna walk home from school. And suddenly, I walked by a half a dozen poles, and there was the word "kike" on the poles in black magic marker. I knew that it was an awful word, but I didn't really understand what it was. I've done some research on it. So, when, in the early 1900s, when the early Jewish immigrants came to this country and couldn't write, and were asked to sign any document they needed to sign with an X, well, they couldn't do that. They felt very uncomfortable doing that, so they made a circle. And in Yiddish, a circle is called the kikel. Well, that became the word "kike," which is an amalgamation of every trope that you can imagine, as it's perceived by the Jewish people. So, when I saw that swasticker, I knew that I could not do anything. I actually immediately texted David, and since then, and I began to put posts of everything that happened on Nextdoor. So, 900 posts later, and working with Lisa, who, we had worked together for a month, hand in glove, tonight's the first time I've seen her in person. We have developed a concept of educating the community about antisemitism. There are a number of things that we're working on, but the one we're working on now is, Dr. Gussi, if you would let me unveil, Lisa, would you help me?
Yes.
These posters are in the process of being printed, and we have developed a GoFundMe campaign. A GoFundMe campaign, which only started four days ago. We have raised $5,000, and we are working on a plan to kickstart the campaign by disseminating these signs to the public. There are other things that we're working on, but, again, I could not not do anything, so this is just the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your story and for taking action here.
Yeah, thanks for the energy you're putting into this now, or Lisa, it's really, it makes a huge difference. I think this is gonna make a difference, so thank you.
Yep, I agree. I can see we have another public comment. Just come on up.
I'm not quite sure where I want to start, but I will start with the organization that we just heard about is very exciting. It's something that I think needs to happen, and I think it needs as much support as we can possibly give it. And in order to give it support, we really need to have some contact information. So, if we could hear about who's in charge, email address, telephone number, website, any kind of information that you're willing and ready to provide, I think we would like to know it, and we would like everyone in the community to know it so they can all be involved.
So, if you want to share any of that information, you can. Otherwise, people could reach out to us for it. I don't know if you have a contact you are willing to share currently. It's up to you.
I would say information about the GoFundMe and the campaign can be found on GoFundMe. Maybe we can provide that to the supervisors. I am speaking for Howard, that I imagine giving out our personal information may not be as comfortable, just given the topic. But we're happy to share that, and through that, they can connect to us through email and get more specifics about what we're doing.
And there'll be more posts on Nextdoor. There'll be an email sent out by the CCA next week with more information about what we're doing. We'll keep in touch.
All right, that sounds great. And if anyone has questions, they can always reach out to the township or the Board of Supervisors, and we can get you the information you need.
With some of the money, Lisa and I have decided that to not just have the resolution be on the website. We intend to publicize it in the local paper and maybe even the Inquirer, because just being on the website is not enough. It is very clear to me that the only way to stop this vile hate is to stand up to it, and we need to stand up to it in every possible way that we can think of. So, that's something else that we plan on doing with the money.
Thank you. I love all these ideas. That's fantastic.
Yeah, the only other thing I would say for contact details is my Trudifferent email is public. It's tmillar@trudifferent.org. You can, people, if you're interested, you can always email me. I know these guys pretty well at this point, so.
Can I speak? I just want to say, Mr. Griffl, I saw your post on Nextdoor the day you put it up there, and I'm very sympathetic to this. One of my best friends is on the Board of TE Jewish Connections, and she told me when the group was being formed, and I've seen personally how much this hurt her and her family, to know this is going on, and they certainly do want to see the strong response. And I think that's the least we can do, is have a strong response to this. I've also visited Dachau, a concentration camp in Germany, and it made me physically ill to be there. It is so stunning to see, I'm getting chills right now even talking about it, just it's really that moving to see how Jewish people were treated back then, and to see the gas chambers and the barracks in person, and it's just really stunning. And I think we don't have enough education on that these days. There was a lot when I was a kid, in the 70s and the 80s, but it seems to have gone by the wayside. Everybody seems to think it's not a problem anymore, but it is. And so, I just want to let y'all know you have 100% my full support. Thank you.
Any other public comments tonight? All right, so we can move on. Oh, we have one more. Okay. No, we're just focused on this agenda item, sorry. All right, we will move on to the vote, and this is another roll call vote, so we will start with Supervisor Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Humble.
Aye.
Supervisor Holt.
Aye.
Supervisor Weissaki.
Aye.
Supervisor Freed.
Aye.
Supervisor Basker.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. All right, and we will move on to the next agenda item, which is a motion to adopt Resolution 202317 authorizing support of an application for a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program grant for the bike pump track, and authorizing the township manager and assistant township manager to execute all documents and agreements related to the grant. Mr. Duraco.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, we're asking authorization for staff to apply for the grant. This is a project that we've been working on the last couple of months with some key stakeholders who are here tonight to also answer questions from the board if needed. We're looking for, you know, asking for a grant of $250,000. The required match is $37,500. I'll share some good news, that I was told today that the appraisal of the land which can be used as part of the match came back to $30,000, which would require essentially $7,500 of this match to be fundraised by the stakeholder group. I can, I'll let them answer if they have that money. But the estimated project cost from our study that was conducted by Penoni came back at $235,000 and some change, so I'm happy to answer questions. The stakeholders here, they can answer some questions.
All right, thank you. We'll start with the motion. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any board comments? Any public comments?
Yeah, I do have just a couple comments. We received a letter from the Turnbridge Civic Association. I had a chance to speak with one of the representatives from that association, and I think they were super helpful. I mean, they're, you know, they're not opposed to the bike track, per se. They had a lot of interesting or important observations and concerns about the actual implementation, how it was gonna be constructed, which we should consider as we kind of move forward with the project around hours of operation, safety, noise, traffic, parking, and all the logistic things that we need to make sure we get right to make this a big success. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was acknowledged, that they brought up those concerns, and I think they're all things that would go into the, as the track is planned and developed, that those would all be things we'd want to really consider and engage with them a little bit on this. So, I just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Any other board comments before we move to public? All right, public comments, you can come up to the mic and say your name and address.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Tom McGarrigal. I live at 1390 Eve Spring Road in Malvern. I am the president of the Turnbridge Civic Association. Joining me tonight are four other members of our Board of Directors, Sylvia Fruto Smith, Andrew Stagliano, Damian Del Vecchio, and William Baylor. On behalf of the board, the first thing I want to do is thank the supervisors for the great civic duty that you perform to keep the quality of life high in our township for all the township residents. And Chief Beatty, I wanted to congratulate you and extend our congratulations from our board for the accreditation that you've achieved under your leadership. The police keep us safe, and it's something that we appreciate every day, although we don't, we know that we're lucky to have such a great police department, and now with the accreditation, so does the rest of the state. And Supervisor Miller, thank you for giving me a phone call today to discuss the letter. And I'm sorry about the timing of the letter, but we just found out, or I just found out about it on Saturday when we read it in The Patch. The Patch was a little troubling because it encouraged people to come to show their support of, as opposed to just general comment. This all has the feel of kind of just a rush to judgment. And I think, and so in our letter, we're not opposing, Commissioner Miller's right, Supervisor Miller's right, but we're asking to slow this down, because these parks, I'm not sure, Supervisor Humble, you referred to abandoned parks. I'm not sure the cure for abandoned park problem is to build a quarter of a million-dollar park. Maybe I misunderstood the bike park.
I don't understand about, when did I mention an abandoned park?
Abandoned bike park? I thought...
I never, I never referred to that.
I apologize.
I mean, earlier when I was speaking today, somebody, I called it a bandit, B-A-N-D-I-T. Somebody had...
Bandit.
Had built like a, you know, an illegal bike path at Stratford Park.
Right, that's what we're talking, I'm talking about the same thing. I'm saying I'm not sure the cure for these bandit parks that arise is to build a quarter of a million-dollar one. And I just think that more study needs to be done. Hillary was kind enough to send me a copy of the Penoni report. And in reading the Penoni report, look, there's a reason why there's not a similar park in Radnor. There's a reason why there's not a similar park in Lower Marion. And there's a reason why the proposal by the borough of Malvern to create a park, I think their park was about $290,000, was defeated by the voters just last Tuesday. You know, whenever you're trying to replace green with concrete, careful consideration has to go into a whole number of factors. The environmental issue is an issue. We have some broad questions that we would like to be addressed before moving forward. Environmental is one of them. The Penoni report talked about, nothing about the impact this would have on pollinators or other wildlife, nothing. The Penoni report was focused on rainwater overfill, and the answer was to build a fairly expensive detention basin. Nothing about the effect of wildlife, nothing about on the impact of noise. These are gonna be concrete, right? Concrete is noisier than dirt. There's nothing in this feasibility study about supervision. I mean, sports are great. I played sports all my life. The members of the board, our board, play sports, our children play sports, and now our grandchildren are playing sports. And there's always a risk of injury. This sport, if you watch it, is very fast-paced and a lot of jumps. And the fact that we're not gonna have any supervision when this activity's taking place may lead to a number of lawsuits. It should be looked at. I don't know what the history of townships who have created these parks and what lawsuits or what injuries occur, but it's something that I think a response, you know, that should be looked at. There's an impact on traffic. You know, the parking, I don't have to tell you that the parking at Mill Road Field is very, very tight. You probably, and most could fit about 30 cars there. When you have soccer and baseball, when you have the cross-country team, and you have a bike park there, there's simply not enough. And even the overflow here from the township building may not be enough for that. Which leads to the local issue and the impact on our community. Our community is the closest to the park and will be impacted the most. There's been certainly nothing on the feasibility study on the impact of this park on our community. When parking's tight, you know, as I looked at the site plan, it's about 50 miles, 50 yards, not from our front door, but from our back door. It is closer, our property is closer to the proposed site than the entrance to Mill Road Park. It doesn't take a great imagination to think that our community will be used as a drop-off point and perhaps even a parking point, because you can gain access to that area from the back of our community. That needs to be, that needs to be looked at. We just... We just suggest that it should have been done during the due diligence issue, and I know a lot of work's been done both by the township and by the proponents, but I think more is absolutely necessary before you move forward on this major, major project. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, if I, if I may just make, and I, I understand your comments and, and I'm, you know, this is something the board's obviously going to consider, and I don't in any way mean to detract from your comments. You raise a lot of, what are, what are valid issues? The one issue I do take is with the rush to judgment comment. I think I just need to state for, for the public that this is no less than the third meeting that this board has considered this issue, not counting the various meetings where the Parks Committee has considered the issue. So I understand this is local government, we're not part of the 24-hour news cycle, and I get all that, but, but to indicate that the, the first time you saw it was in the patch and that you feel that, well, it was sort of a fait accompli or it was pushing, I mean, had there been any negative comments other than there were some pushback from the board early, and it would have been nice if you were here for that, to help us give some constructive criticism, but I, I understand, look, I get it. We all have busy lives and we understand that we're not the, you know, we're not at the top of everyone's list, but I just wanted to, I mean, I, I did think it was important to note that, that this has been, you know, on our agenda at least for three months.
Right, three months, but, and, and by no means do I mean to denigrate the work that the township, the board, and the proponents have done, but by comparison, I believe that the proposal for the Malvern Borough Site took about five years to get to the vote. So by comparison, a few months compared to five years of meeting with the community, trying to work things out, changing the locations, changing some of the conditions, by comparison, it seemed.
And I can't, I can't speak because I don't know anything about the scope of the Malvern site, how, you know, what, what its impact, I don't know anything about it, so I don't know how the two compare to each other.
Well, respectively, that's my point. I mean.
Well, I don't know that we need to understand the Malvern site to analyze our own site.
Well, I mean, it's a location that's less than 10 miles from here, that is going, that went through the exact same issue that our township is going through. I would think that as part of the due diligence, someone could find out what was, what were the pros, what were the cons, what were the community concerns, how were they being addressed, were they ignored, was there, was there some compromise? I mean, there's no, the reason, and again, Supervisor Miller, I do appreciate the time that you took in calling me, but when I asked why does this park need to be 50 yards from our boundary line, I was told because we couldn't move the pathway for the cross-country path. That didn't seem to me to be an adequate explanation, you know? I mean, the cross-country path is you, you basically take a, you know, you just take a swath of about 10 feet wide and change it and move everything down the line. So again, why that particular site at the very edge of not only the park, but at the edge of our community was chosen is a bit of a mystery.
So can I, Mark, before you add anything, can I just, just, let's be clear here. There's a park that's going to open in Phoenixville in the next two weeks. It's modeled after, it's designed by the same people who are designing the park that we're proposing here. So it's not like we haven't looked at other parks that are being constructed right now in our community. So that's just, just on that.
Any other besides?
That's the one we looked at, that's the one we looked at.
So one, okay.
Three miles away, 3.1 miles, I just checked it. And one, there was a person from your community who did come and speak and was pretty active at these meetings, so we, you know, we have heard from your community, just to be clear.
As, as we mentioned.
And this is, and this, this, what we're proposing now is to approve, moving forward to try to get a grant to help pay for this. The community residents are planning on funding it. This isn't something that the township is funding. And so these people want to have an amenity for their children or their, you know, teenagers, which is a valuable amenity that they.
I certainly don't want to quibble with you, but I thought I heard Mr. Duraco say that, that they've already allowed, allowed 30,000 and that there's going, the township's going to take out a loan, so there is going to be some township money, but.
No, no. No. No, the 30, that is the appraisal, and they can use that as the match for their application. They have, they'll have to raise an additional 7,000 something, I don't remember the number.
But I will add that before any money was spent by anybody, this was discussed at multiple meetings. And so again, I understand we're not at the top of the list. I do take a little bit of issue with you criticizing the board's due diligence when you, I don't want to say weren't paying attention, didn't even know about it until recently, after months and months.
I deeply, I deeply regret that. I deeply regret that. Fair enough. And look, I'm not, I'm not saying that we're.
May I just interrupt? How long will it take for the grant to be approved that we would send to the state? Just estimate.
October? November, November.
Okay, so we're talking about.
Cause one will hear, yeah, if, if.
We'll hear in five months or six months about this. Okay.
And, and the concern Supervisor Holt is I have not seen the resolution, and it's still not clear to me if by the vote tonight, the only thing that the Board of Supervisors is doing is permitting the proponents to file their application with the state. That's one thing, and we don't object to that. But, but if the, if the proposal is endorsing and saying, we approve this park, we think this is a good idea, we support the proponents and please state, fund it, we do have a problem with that vote. Because there are these other factors that should be considered before the township moves forward.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
And I will just add for the public that many of the common, the concerns that you had were not included in the feasibility study, but were included in our own feasibility. Our environmental advisory council went through at least one meeting with, I don't know, they're right there. At least one meeting going through the environmental impacts and honing in on that area because it's invasives and it will actually perhaps even be beneficial. And I do believe that we looked at both Malvern and Phoenixville as part of our in-house kind of feasibility to understand more about this. And I can't, and I think the path that you had mentioned was another one that is included in the township, you know, understanding of how it will happen. And some of the other things you mentioned are ones that will be discussed during the process, and this is a very early step in the process. This is to get funding. That doesn't mean it's going to be built tomorrow. It means there's, it's the first step of a whole path of things that have to happen, and there will be more ways and opportunities to weigh in on that process.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if there's anything that we can do to assess, we will not be assessed, but we all apologize for coming late to the party.
Thank you very much, and thanks for coming out and sharing your thoughts.
I, I just want to relate that the Parks and Rec Board has been considering this for almost a year, and we had a subcommittee formed that worked with the EAC to go scouting parks in different sites. And the EAC's report was very favorable that that was a good spot as goes the effect on the vegetation and the wildlife, because right now, as I understand, there's a lot of dead, downed trees all in that area with a lot of invasives growing over it. So those would come out, because right now the space is totally unused. As goes the noise and such, I can tell you, I live, my house backs up to the Chester Valley Trail. In fact, the trail goes over part of my property, all of us who live on this street. It actually flows across by easement, the very backs of our property. And we were very worried in 2011 when the plans started for it to go up, but as it turns out, it was done really, really well by the county, and we don't hear any noise. It never bothers us. So, and it's, you know, it's behind our fence.
And, and I will say, you know, getting sort of moving beyond that, we certainly, and given that this isn't the end of the process, I won't say it's the beginning of the process, but it's certainly not the end of the process, I, I think many of us really do want to hear your concerns and comments, and, and it's an if, if it's going to go in, we certainly would want it to be at least impactful to your community.
So it's very, I mean, it would be good for us. We want to work with you to get to a common goal. So if you have a noise study and say this is not going to impact, if you share with us, that, you know, that, that is great. The other thing is, it sounds to me like a big benefit for that area, and that area is used, I mean, it's used not only by the 28 homes that are butted, but that area, you know, just for walking, a nature walk, or by many dog walkers who don't live in our community. So it is huge. It sounds to me like a major benefit is removing the trees, not necessarily putting in concrete. And anytime you want to remove those dead trees, have that, we would welcome that.
All right, thank you.
I totally understand your concern. Like I said, when the Chester Valley Trail was going through, I was leading 45 neighbors who all backed up to where the trail was going to go through, and we were very worried about different things, but it, it turned out to be a good project. So, thank you.
Can I ask a question about process? So Erin, or I guess maybe Erin, it would go to planning, once we had the money raised, and it would not go to planning?
Yeah, I mean, it would just be an internal improvement. I don't think there would be any need for planning commission review.
Yeah, it would be straight building permit, stormwater upgrading permit. It's our property, it's existing, it's existing park, it's a park improvement of the existing park.
Can I just ask?
All right, why don't we come on, let, let Tom come on up and speak.
Can I, can I ask just one, one more question here, like I did, you know, stormwater? I mean, there is, I mean, we do have the control.
The, the sketch plan has stormwater management built into it.
Yeah, no, I know, after Julie just reminded me, but I wanted to actually say it publicly here, so if people hear that. So yes, that will be dealt with. That's not an insignificant, you know, where there was no control, there will be control now, so.
Thank you. My name is Tom Pacora, I go to Valley Forge Middle School, and a lot of the questions that have been proposed tonight have been answered in other meetings. So like, they were talking about with the environment, everything is dead. The EAC came out before we even proposed it to the supervisors, and they said everything's dead, and they wanted us to actually come in and clear it, just to stop the invasives from spreading. And then another big thing was concrete. It's actually made out of dirt, so it's not going to be as loud and everything like that. Also, safety was a big thing. Helmets and bike, biking is like cool, like a lot of times, people that don't wear helmets don't tend to ride, and the more advanced people and the adults, because this park is for everyone and everyone will be riding it, do wear helmets more and influence everyone to start wearing helmets if they don't already. And another thing with safety is it's multi-levels. So if you're just beginning, there's a beginner level, intermediate level, and advanced. And then one other big thing was traffic. So the Chester Valley Trail does link up with the proposed location, so we're all on bikes, so we don't need to worry, really worry about driving anywhere, we could just bike there. And the other thing is with the drop off anything, everything, that's not even like a thing because we all just bike there. And then another thing was funding, so we did do a lot with funding so far. We asked WISFIS Bank for $30,000, and then my nonprofit is in for 10 grand. Keswick has a letter of commitment for three grand. Zummo Bikes is in for 500, and we're waiting on Trek, Berwin Tavern, Silverboard, Duper Ty, Paoli Hardware, JT Wilder, and many more for donations as well. Thank you again.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes.
Good job, guys.
Thank you very much for letting me speak. This facility will be less than 50 yards from the back of my house. I don't know if anybody on, on the board would like that 50 yards from the back of their house. There will be lights, there will be noise, there will be roads. I already have people that park in front of my house in the cul-de-sac and walk across my property to go play soccer and baseball, softball, baseball, actually. I'm okay with it. I, I think it's a pet project of a few people coaching and or associated with the Conestoga biking team, the mountain biking team, and they would like a place, and that's fine. They may have a place, I'm not sure why it wouldn't be at Wilson Park, where the other sports facilities are. I don't know. I think part of, I don't know how this got proposed to be put here. Maybe, do you know, Mr. Miller, how this proposal for this location was chosen?
Yes.
Okay. Because you mentioned the community wants it, and some may want it. I personally think it's a small number. I've spoken to everybody I know in CE, I've been here 25 years, nobody knows anything about it, and I think that's part of the reason that that location was specifically chosen, because most people in CE don't even know it exists. They know the composting area exists, if it's still composting, but it's a long haul from the composting area. If you're, if you must put it there because there's no room, put it where the composting was, which is 200 yards from our community. We wouldn't see or hear anything. But to move it all the way up past that area above the park and put it 50 yards from my backyard and some other, Tom's backyard's very close, as is neighbors, I just think that's a bad decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Arthur Zadrosny, Painter's Lane. I don't have a real stake in this issue. I don't have kids in this community, I don't have grandkids in this community. What I have are memories of where I grew up and the field we had available to us behind my neighborhood and the bike paths we cut in, and the forts we built, tree forts, underground forts, ball fields, all the great things that kids used to be able to do, without worrying about parents and organized groups telling them how to do it. You want to know who started this? It was me. Okay. This really started a couple of years ago in the midst of COVID, when kids were locked up, had no place to go, and a bunch of kids anxious to get outside started building their own version of a bike skills park. They found an open place in, in the Chesterbrook community where I live, and they were enjoying themselves, until someone pointed out there were signs there. Signs said, do not disturb. People complained. I worked in education as my terminal career, I was, I'm an engineer by training, but I spent the last 17 years in public education, teaching high school physics. And I learned real fast how to tell the good teachers, the teachers who cared from the other teachers. The other teachers were the ones who would always complain, what's wrong with these kids? Why don't they grow up? They're only 14, 15. That's our job as teachers, to help them mature. These kids were doing what kids do. They ignored signs and they built something so they could have fun. It got taken away. They started building another one. I found out about it. I went over to them, I said, guys, I like this, great idea, but wrong place, let's do this the right way. So I brought it to the Civic Association in Chesterbrook. We brought it to the Parks and Rec Foundation. We got to support, and you've gone through a lot of the history over here. And I want to thank everybody who's been cooperating, but it's those two kids, and this room was packed with about 40 kids supporting this program and adults saying, we want this bike park here. So this is a step that we need. The timeline to get this grant in is on us, May 31st. We still have a long way to go, and we'd be happy to work with you. There are no lights, by the way. This is going to be a daytime operation, and we'd be happy to talk about restricting hours so that, you know, you're not being affected. Besides, most of the kids, as, as Dom said, are going to be biking here, so they're going to have to leave early to get home before sunset anyway. But I want to thank you for your support. Thank you, and I want to thank Hillary, she's been great to work with, getting the, the nuts and bolts to the grant together. I was really pleased that we got the, the appraisal in at the value it came, much more than we had hoped, which means we can do more features with the park as we continue on the fundraising that you heard. So again, if you want to blame anybody, come see me. Thank you.
So can I get just a little clarification? The only thing we're asking for tonight is a resolution, approval of a resolution for a grant, is that to request a grant, is that right?
At that location. Because you're using the appraisal as part of your application, the study was done for that location with the stormwater is designed for that location.
Right, understood.
Yep.
But it's, so what happens if we apply for the grant, we get it, and there's some discussion about maybe doing a different location? Would we?
Then you turn down the grant.
You'd have to come up with the $30,000 because you're basing on the appraisal of the value of the land you're submitting, which is at that location. So you'd have to reapply, I don't, I'm not sure. I don't know what, you'd be changing the grant application because you're changing
You'd have to come up with the $30,000, because you're basing on the appraisal of the value of the land you're submitting, which is at that location. So you'd have to reapply. I don't, I'm not sure. I don't know what, you'd be changing the grant application because you're changing the location and the in-kind contribution.
So would we have to take the grant? Would we have to accept the grant?
No, you can always turn down a grant.
You wouldn't want to apply and turn it down if you got it, it wouldn't look good.
Right, right. That's, right.
Yeah. And again, I'll clarify. What we're really pushing is the May 31st deadline to meet the grant. We won't hear until November, so there's a long time between now and when we'll know if we get the funds. And then even there, time to start the actual planning, submitting bids, and working with the township. Okay, thank you.
Just real quick for the board. If we're successful in this grant application, assuming the board approves it, you know, November, so let's say January, you're still going to need to do the full design, full engineering of it, then that's where, you know, you can address more comments potentially, and concerns about the overall design. This is, you know, this process, this sketch plan that Panoni did for us, was essentially take what the boys had already gotten from Dirt Sculpt, and place it on Mill Road and say, "Okay, this is some of the other things you're going to need." And again, just, it's a very, it's a very high-level view. And that's, again, the estimates are derived off of, you know, those numbers, plus, you know, they have good, they have good base in numbers, but overall, it just, you know, in general, the numbers could come back higher, you know, once you get into planning and design. There's a lot, there's a lot of opportunity still there.
Yeah, certainly, we get into screening and fencing and, but, I'm just in terms of location.
But the location would move. It's a specific location.
I mean, you'd have to, we could check, but you'd have to resubmit, I would think, because you're changing the application scope.
And this is the concern, and there is some confusion, because I heard Supervisor Miller asked Mr. Duraco a question about will there be another step? And then I, what I thought I heard was, "No." So it sounds as if a fait accompli, that if you approve the loan, the applying for the grant, and the state gives you the money, then you are going to have a tough choice. You're either going to accept the money and build, and you have no, you have no discretion. You have to build on the location that's in part of the application, or you reject it. What we're proposing is, let's take the time, let's build on coalitions. I'm more than happy to work with the proponents. Our board's more than happy to work with the proponents. Let's work together where there's a win-win for everyone, and then submit, then submit the loan application that you won't have to change. When that grant is approved, we're good, and then we can go to, we can go to build.
I think the challenge is, as I understand it, there's a May 31st deadline?
And I think it's once a year.
Right.
So that's, that's the challenge.
So, so I recognize that it would be, I recognize that we would be putting this, it doesn't mean that you can't send in a grant application August 1st, September 1st, December 1st. It just means that that won't be completely evaluated, or the grant given during this timeframe.
You don't know that. I just heard, it's generally, these deadlines are set for a reason. It's probably, it's, that's it. We got to do it this year. I just heard our Assistant Township Manager, Joe Duraco, said something, you know, that makes eminent sense to me, which is, "Hey, we're looking for the money to do this, okay? We got to, we got to, we got to make, we got to apply for this grant. We have to look at what the kids are raising," and I mean at the kids. "We have to look at the, the assessment, the, not the assessment, you know, the value, and we go move forward. But while we're moving forward, there's a lot of, the location, this wasn't picked because it was Tuesday. I don't, you know, it was looked at. Other locations were looked at. It was, the idea was, hey, this is workable for us, for a different township, on a different land somewhere. We couldn't use Wilson Farm Park, because we have a plan that we're, that has been a final plan, a master plan for things that will be happening at Wilson Farm Park, and we have a grant that we're still waiting for from the state. So, this isn't, wasn't done behind somebody's back, or to not choose this. This location is important to us. And we know, we are going, and that doesn't mean steps won't be taken, or there won't be screens, or they may or may not be areas where we move it, or tweak it, or do things. You just heard from the young man there, when we talked about no lights. I think Art said that. No lights. It's not going to be lights. That's one thing that goes right away. Concrete? No, it's called dirt. We're going to have dirt there. I wasn't, I wasn't, I, when this all started, I wasn't sure about it. I needed more detail. I got more detail. And as Joe said, it's, what's it called? Dirt Sculpt? They do the first, first plans, or the first ideas, or the mockups. Well, there goes, it's going to be, we're going to have detail going forward. And the first thing we are doing today, or tonight, is saying, "Hey, are we, can we, can we approve staff to move forward with an application for monies for this group to build it, with their, with not, non-tauntship money?" That doesn't mean that we can't look at what your concerns are, and try to work with them, but, but we won't, may not be everything that you want.
Supervisor Wasaki, the thing that I'm getting from this meeting, though, is that you may be locked into the location by, when, once you file that grant, or else you're going to push the whole project back another year by having to send in another. So what I'm wondering, my question.
Well, we're pushing it back a year anyway, if we don't load on it tonight.
Right. So the choices are, okay.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a competitive grant, and there's no guarantee we're going to get this money. Let's, let's put that first. We hope we do. If we do, great. Then that leads to scenario two. Okay, let's assume we secure the funding. We do have, obviously, the application is saying this is where the site would be. We would have to, if you want to look somewhere else, I'm not sure what that would do, the application. I think it would jeopardize it, because you obviously were using $30,000 on the valuation of that certain piece of property. Now, you could move it this, this way or that way, within the general area. When, when we get into final design, the stormwater might shift it one way or another. You know, all those questions, if we secure the money, would have to be finalized. But yeah, I think generally, it's going to be, if you're applying for this round of applications, if we secure it, it will be generally in this location, give or take 50 yards or so. But that's, you know, that's probably what's going to happen.
Well, Mr., may I ask Mr. Martin a question? Could, could you, in this application, broaden the location to give yourselves more flexibility?
I think it's, I think the site plan is required.
May I, may I jump in, please? So I've been doing a lot of listening. You haven't heard me talk much about this, but I've been listening to what everyone has said. I think, at this point, we're just asking for the grant. Now, if the grant comes through, then certainly in the detailed design, we can address the concerns. But at this point, there's a lot of ifs in the, you know, with regard to the grant. So I don't see any value in delaying the grant. When the grant comes, we have a choice of saying, we can address these concerns, or we cannot address these concerns. And if we can't address the concerns, at that point, we have the option of not accepting the money or doing something different.
Well, that would be unfortunate.
No, but hang on a second. I'm sorry. It's jumping the gun at this point to say that the concerns are not being addressed. We've heard the concerns. We're asking for a grant so that we can, you know, look at the project and consider moving forward. And by the way, you know, the, the trees are, there are dead trees there. I have not taken up the offer to walk the property yet, but I will, I will do that. It seems to me, by looking at the satellite images, that it's a reasonable place, but I accept that, you know, you would not like, you know, potential disturbance in your, in your backyard. You're concerned about parking. You're concerned about noise. You have a lot of local concerns. We can address those. But if we don't get the money, we're never going to address the concerns. So let's at least work towards getting the, the money, and we can, as we move forward, we will address the concerns. We are very responsive to the citizens. I personally am committed to listening to citizens. I listen a lot. And at this point, I'm supportive of moving forward to apply for the grant.
Well, again, I think a lot of consideration to a lot of different interests have been made, but not very much consideration to my community.
Let me ask a question to help you support you. When did these residents receive any notice from the township in the mail, email, or anything related to this?
No mail.
So they didn't, they weren't aware that there was going to be a quarter million-dollar project going next door to them, except unless they went on patch or, and got, or saw the Board of Supervisors having meetings related to this bike park? Is that fair?
That's fair.
Okay.
In the history, I mean, we've received correspondence directly from the township before. One time, they didn't like the hedges on the edge of our property. It was too long. So we were told to get them cut, and we cut them. So there, you know, we've got communications to the Homeowners Association before, not, not here. My, my biggest concern here is that by sending in this application, it sounds as if you're locked in on the, on the location. I'm not sure what can be done to broaden it. I mean, you, Mr. Baylor said, "If you could move this 200 yards further, then, then many of the concerns would, would eviscerate." But it sounds to me like you can't do that, that you might have 50 yards at most.
Yeah, I don't know. To, to receive the funding and the actual grant documents that list all the requirements in there, but clearly in the application, you have to delineate where you, where you want this to be, how big it's going to be. There was a site plan requirement. So yeah, we could move it to another park. I think that would put the application and the grant funds in jeopardy, but I don't know till I read the official documents once we're approved. So, but generally, that's why they want that as part of your application, because you're committing to a general location within the park, or where you're, this, this facility is going to be.
Yeah, like, just.
Can I just address this, just one, one other thing to think about here? So, Tom.
Yes.
So I, I back up to Valley Forge Middle School. When I moved in, there was nothing between me and the school. It was just big, open field area and all that stuff, right? You back, you back up to a township park. I mean, things change over time. So in my case, the, the school district came, and they wanted to put in athletic fields along that area. And it took a bunch of discussions, but we ended up putting in a, a plan that the neighbors are fine with, the school district's happy with, and it worked out for everybody. But it's not like I could tell the school district, "No, you can't build those fields there, because I want the view." Like, that, it's not my property. I mean, you back up to a township park, we're using it for park use. We're totally willing to work with you to make it, except, you know, work out for everybody, but it's not like you're just telling us you don't want it there. And that's, that's probably not what's going to happen here, from my perspective.
Well, we don't want it 50 yards from our property line.
150 feet.
200 yards would be much more acceptable. And I seem to recall Supervisor Miller, that when that proposed fields went in, there were some protests, and there, and you may have been one of that.
For sure.
Protesting it.
Yeah, for sure. And we worked out an agreement.
So it worked out. See, that's the difference. No one's talked to us. You're talking to me right now, saying you can't do anything, that you want to fight, that you're prepared.
So I think, I think we can move towards the vote now. I think, thank you for coming out, and, you know, I think even if we vote on this tonight, it does not mean that we have to go through with it, and it's certainly the beginning of the conversations on what it will look like. And now that you're involved and engaged, there can be a lot of conversations to make it, you know, as acceptable as possible, if it does go forward. All right, looks like we have another comment.
I do not have an investment in this project, which sounds great. Sounds like a fun thing. Sounds like, sounds like something that we should support, but not in my backyard. And it was Mr. Holt who asked, and you must please clarify this for everybody looking at this video. How responsible was the township in notifying the immediate residents around this proposal? Were they informed by telephone, by mail? Were they informed when it was in the planning stage? Were they informed when it was in the proposal, which is what you've got now? And if you did not inform the residents around this proposal, you are legally.
Can I ask you what proposal you think is presently pending in front of us?
Pardon me?
What proposal do you think is presently pending in front of us?
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
What proposal do you think is presently pending in front of us?
You are proposing the grant. You're going to be asking for money, but that location and the, the land evaluation is attached to that, and if that is in, is being contested, then it's null and void. I don't care whether it's May 31st. This is a violation of your Home Rule Charter to not notify the community that is in effect.
I'm not sure, can we, I'm not sure that that's true.
And I don't know whether you want to put yourself into a legal situation.
Do you have a provision, if you're saying we're violating the law, do you have a provision you can point us to?
I think that this township.
I mean, that's a pretty strong statement. Do you have a provision?
It is, it is.
So do you have a provision?
Because it has happened to us as well.
I understand that, but you're.
And I, I would like the people who are looking at this to understand what the process is for including the residents of this township in the initial, not the patch, not a computer. Not everybody has a computer. Not by cell phone, not by email. How is the township involving and notifying, but notifying, what is the procedure that the residents were notified, and how were they?
For a grant application, you're asking.
So, Ms. Fuller, could you respond for park improvements in general? Is, are there rules for notification? And I guess, what phases?
In your charter, I'm not aware of any specific rules related to parks, or development or anything of that nature, and certainly nothing with regard to grant applications for funding township improvements. I'd be happy to consider it if there was a specific reference, but I'm not aware of anything in the charter.
Thank you. All right.
Excuse me, can I just, Mrs. Cooten, can you just state your name for the record? Because some of us know who you are, but you haven't stated it.
Jacqueline Cunin, resident, Richards Road, Wayne.
Thank you. And also the gentleman behind you with the Conestoga gray jacket, we didn't get your name either, and I'm interested.
I, I.
The gentleman right behind you.
I will. I just want the board to acknowledge that you're hearing a complaint from the community, that they weren't contacted initially, and that this has been a dialogue between the township and the people who want this proposed park.
In public?
So, that's okay.
In, in public?
It's, but it is the surrounding community.
But this isn't land, you understand, we're not at the land development stage, right? We're not at the zoning stage. We're not at, we're, we're just, the question is, do we ask for money to see if we can build this thing?
Yeah, but you already heard from all these different people that that lot, that location is going to be on that.
Well, you were at the meetings previous. I know you come a lot, so you were at the meetings the last couple of months.
No, we weren't, not for this. No, I'm here.
Oh, you haven't heard, so you weren't here when the room was filled with people?
No, no, I was.
So you didn't hear all the people that actually came and gave us all the reasons that we should do it?
Sure. Parents and children are going to.
Okay, and you haven't been to the EAC meetings where it was discussed?
But I have, no.
And you haven't been to the parks meetings where it was discussed?
No, I am talking about procedure now.
I am talking about, that's what I'm talking about, procedure.
No, you're, you're getting, you, you are.
No, I'm asking, you're, you're saying that we didn't let people know, and I'm saying that there's no less than.
I'm, I'm hearing from this gentleman that.
That we're hearing from the first time tonight, that we're hearing from for the first time tonight, after months of discussions on this. We're hearing the first time tonight, and you're critical of the fact that because we're here, because.
I am reacting.
Because we're hearing it for the first time tonight.
Mr. Freed, Mr. Freed, you didn't understand what I was saying.
I apparently do not.
I am asking about protocol for contacting the residents around a site where something is going to give you.
And I think that's been discussed five or six times already.
So thank you very much for your comments. We did just check, and that, that protocol is not required under Home Rule Charter for parks or for grant application.
How it would apply to a situation, like, who do we contact?
Mr. Cooten.
And where does it end?
Why don't we move on to the next.
Excuse me, Mr. Freed.
And how do we contact them?
Mr. Freed, we're going to move to the next comment.
Excuse me. First of all, we all need to calm down for a moment, and I appreciate, I know what it's like to get angry, and I really don't like to get angry. So please, let's all, everybody be calm for a couple of minutes. Now, I would like to say, make two, say, say at least two things. I may say three or four, I don't know, but at least two things. Number one, Supervisor Freed made a very interesting and important statement. He said, we're, and I'm not going to quote him exactly, because I can't, but in general, in, in, I, concept, Mr. Supervisor Freed said, "We are just asking for a grant for this project. We are not in the planning stages yet." Now, I would suggest.
Now, I would suggest that a township...
Land development planning is what I said.
Excuse me, I'm sorry?
Land development planning.
I don't, I'm not understanding.
Land development planning.
Okay, land development plan. Whatever it is that you need to do has not yet been done, but you're asking for money to pay for it. Now, I would suggest to you that you make, you restate the motion to say something to the effect that we, there is a motion on the floor to begin developing a concept for a bike park at a particular or other location, and once we have a plan, we can request money to pay for it. I'll tell you quite frankly, if I got a grant request for an unplanned project, I'd say, gee whiz, thanks for sending it over, but we're not interested. I just wouldn't even bother reading it. If I got to the point where it says, is there a plan for this project? And you said, no, I would just toss it in the trash can. It has no value. So, I think you are approaching this project backward. I would suggest that, before anybody says anything, I would suggest that you very carefully reconsider your position regarding what motion it is you really want to ask for.
So, I do, I understand that there's, there seems to be, tonight, for the first time, some opposition to this. I get that people are on the fly, hearing different bits and pieces, and making arguments that are not, that are not based in fact. I believe, and then I'm going to end on this, because then I think you can...
It is not a fact.
Hold on a second, I'm not finished.
Go ahead.
I believe that it's been mentioned, I can't, I lost count the number of times, the fact that there has been certain amount of planning that was required for the grant request done specifically. And in fact, these people behind you, before anyone came out to object to it, raised money and put money into doing what was required to do the grant request. I think that's been made clear, okay? So, there's that planning, that type of planning, not land development planning, but that type of preliminary planning has been done enough to do the grant request. This is just enough to do the grant request to see if we actually, if they get the money so that they can move forward. That's what this is about. So, let's not say there's been no planning, there's, nothing's been done, we're putting the cart before the horse, no one's been, no one's received any information, it's never been discussed in public, it's all been incognito and behind scenes, and cloak and dagger, and people wearing trench coats, none of that's happened, okay? I understand. I think I've said pretty clearly that I hear the comments, they sound like legitimate concerns to me. I think I've been pretty clear about that. Unfortunately, every time I say something, my words get twisted, and you know me well enough to know that if you're straight with me, we can have a dialogue. If you twist my words, I'm going to put on my lawyer hat, okay? So, if we want to have a dialogue, I'm happy to have a dialogue.
Good idea. I'm not arguing. I don't want to argue with you. However, I do, I would respectfully suggest that you did say that the, we're discussing whether or not to apply for a grant for a project that has not yet been planned. Now, hold on, hold on, please, let me finish. I gave you that respect, I expect in exchange, and I know you better than that, too. You said that all of the work necessary to plan for the grant has been done. Now...
Apply for the grant.
I'm sorry?
To apply for the grant.
To apply for the grant, yes. Excuse me, I'll correct myself and accept your critique. At the same time, I am not, I will say that I am not fully 100% sure of the entire procedure for doing something, a project of this nature. I'm very familiar with the, shall I say, I gained my undergraduate degree in arguing regarding the Wayne Glenn Project, and...
I think that was a graduate degree.
Yes, I'm working on a master's now. But at the same time, I am not fully familiar with the procedure that you are engaged in. I would like to know more about it, but when I ask questions, on a number of occasions, I did not get an answer, for whatever reason, and I won't say any, mention whom I asked, it's unimportant, it's just an irrelevant point at this moment. The important point is that some planning has been done. Apparently, not all of the planning has been done. I would really respectfully suggest that you reconsider your motion, I'm repeating on purpose, not, and change the concept from whether or not you should apply for a grant, but whether or not, considering what people have said, positive and negative, and of course, I do understand there are two sides to the concern, maybe even three, but that you reconsider your motion and state it to the effect that we move to do more planning, to fully plan this project, and before we apply for the grant. Now, I would appreciate that idea, if you would, appreciate your considering that idea.
But am I correct that when you say planning, and people keep saying we need to do more planning, it sounds like the only thing, no matter what planning we do, no matter what contingencies we make, no matter what, the only thing that will make opponents happy is to move the project?
Well, I'm not...
Does that mean, is that fair?
I'm going to cut in really quick.
I know, I know, I know it's getting late.
So, I just want to talk a little bit about the process. So, we actually told them to slow down the process. They came, they wanted to do a grant application a couple of months ago, I don't remember exactly. We told them we can't do that without doing a feasibility study. So, then they fundraised, we did the feasibility study, that produces the information we needed to do this grant application. There's then going to be a lot more planning steps as we move forward if we get the grant, and that will be part of the process, and that will involve a lot of discussions with these stakeholders here.
Fine. It still sounds like one of those, to use the cliche, a catch-22 kind of situation. You apply for the grant, as Mr. Martin suggested, if you apply for a grant and get it and reject it, you look kind of dumb, and that's not a good position for anybody to be in. No, really, I don't want you to look, I really do support what you...
I'm in grant writing. This happens a lot.
I understand, I understand a lot of stuff, okay? I understand a lot of stuff, and regardless of what people think, I'm not opposed, I'm not in support, that's not the point. What is important is process. Now, my experience is, Wayne Glenn, I'm going to say it quickly, that started way back in 2009 or 2006. We did not hear about it until 2011 or '12, when on a Friday, I got an app, I got the agenda, they were going to, the board was going to discuss adoption of the XXX rated ordinance, the Trout Creek Overlay Ordinance. No, there was nothing that I ever saw prior to that. I know because I read the, I read the Turnpike Roundtable Minutes, every single word of them, every single second of the minutes. It's this thick. I read about it, I know how it developed, I know where it was discussed, how it was discussed, I know who discussed it, and I know it was not advertised until it finally came before the board as a hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Cooten.
Okay, that's what, you're very welcome, and I will just say, this is what cannot happen. We have to have communication. Democracy requires communication.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It looks like we have one more person coming up.
Thank you very much.
All right, one more person coming up for comments.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Chair Gussi. Before we move any further, can we please get the name of the man in the gray jacket with cones on it? Because he's never stated his name, and I think that's important.
William? William?
William, okay.
B A L E R.
B A L?
B A I L E R.
Okay, thank you.
Just one last comment. I'm sorry, I don't mean to step in front of you, but I think maybe you really heard about this through the patch by design. I think maybe the proponents of this process did a pretty good job keeping it really quiet. I don't mean the board, and just that, you know, the anger has not come from this side of the table, it's come from that side of the table.
My turn. Madam Chair and the Board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I had a lot of things I wanted to say, but you've already heard everything, so I'm asking you tonight to vote on whether or not this grant can be applied for in time. Everybody is off track. You're not asking for a grant to build a halfway house, or a mobile home park, or anything else. This is something that will benefit the entire community, and I'm asking you, please, tonight, vote for that application, that grant process, so that we can take one more step. Supervisor Wasaki, you said to Don Pacora, who happens to be my grandson, for anyone who doesn't know, that he would have to jump through hoops, and he did, and all the kids that were with him, and the adults that coached him. So, tonight, all I want you to do is make that vote. Vote for that application process so that it gets out in time, so we can move forward. Everything else is in line, even though people weren't here and didn't hear it, everything else is in line. We need that vote. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I think we can move to the vote at this point. Go ahead, Supervisor Basker.
We've been, I've been hearing a lot of stuff, and people have been going around in circles. I think we are covering the same ground in just different words. We have a motion on the floor. I'd like to move forward with that motion, either up or down, and I think, you know, there's an opportunity to have additional input at the end of the meeting and at other meetings, but right now, let's be efficient in terms of how we work, and I did come to this with an open mind.
Thank you. That is just what I was actually saying, that we should, we should move forward for the vote. And this is a roll call vote, and we'll start with Supervisor Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Humble.
Aye.
Supervisor Holt.
Although there wasn't, I don't think, a legal requirement to give notice to the adjoining residents, I think we should have given them notice of what was going on in a quarter million dollar project that could affect them. I didn't really hear their attorney mention, I know this doesn't speak for everybody, a solid opposition to the project. It sounded like he really wants to work together with the township in making sure that it's a project that's successful for the entire community, for them. I'm a strong believer in acquiring enjoyment of one's property, and I can attest that our police department, our township does a great job of making sure that happens anytime there is a complaint. I know we can reasonably restrict hours, usage, everything we need to do for that property. Again, I am upset that we didn't do a shoulda rather than a legalistic notice definition. But again, I am confident, thanks to your counsel saying that we can all work together, we have four or five months to do this, many more months, and plus, it's all very contingent on receiving a grant, of course. So, I will vote yes.
Yeah, Matt, I just want to point out that they had other neighbors come from that neighborhood who came here and talked to us, so it's not like no one knew about it from their neighborhood.
Supervisor Wasaki.
Aye.
Supervisor Freed.
Aye.
Supervisor Basker.
I vote aye, and again, I would like to assure the residents that as we go through the detailed planning process, remember that you don't come up with, plans take money. So, there is a, an iterative process that goes through from doing initial planning to raising money, to doing more planning, to raising more money before you can actually go execute, and as we do the detailed plans, we will work with the residents to alleviate their concerns. So, thank you, and I will vote aye.
I'm also voting aye, and I echo Basker's comments that, you know, I look forward to working with the stakeholders and trying to come up with the best plan possible if we are successful with this grant. All right, thank you, everyone. That was a lively discussion. I didn't expect it to be so lively tonight. We are going to now move on to the next agenda item, which is a motion to approve a letter of support for Valley Forge Trout Unlimited's grant application to the DCED Watershed Restoration Program for Crabby Creek Watershed and Brook Trout Restoration. Mr. Burgo.
Madam Chair and members of the board, before you tonight is a letter of support that is being asked for by the Valley Forge Trout Unlimited. They are submitting a grant application to DCED. This is the same organization that the township submitted a stormwater grant for last year, which we did receive for one of our projects, and they are asking for $200,000. It is one of the projects that we have in our capital budget for Crabby Creek for the infiltration trenches, and as they've gone through the design process, they've determined that they need some additional funding, so they are seeking some additional support. So, they're asking for this grant from DCED, and they're asking for the board for their support.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to authorize the solicitor to work with staff to review and revise Tridifferent Township Code Part II General Legislation Vehicles and Traffic, Article Five, Removal and Impounding of Certain Vehicles, 19536, Designation of Approved Garages, Bonding, Towing, and Storage. Chief Beatty.
During the winter months, when we were doing the fee schedule from 2022 into '23, we were looking at 195.36, and we realized there's some updates and issues that need to be addressed. We would like to be able to start working with the solicitor to draft a new, updated policy or ordinance that covers the, this important procedure for the township. Basically, what we're asking for is just approval to work with the solicitor, because there will be expenses for that consultation.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any board comments or questions?
I just want to thank these guys for working on this. I think this is important and a good change for the residents, so thanks.
Thank you.
Any other board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to forward the petition of Grogan Investment Properties LP for zoning Ordinance Amendment to the Planning Commission for Review. Ms. McPherson.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. So, the township did receive a petition from an applicant to revise the zoning code. Currently, the definition for height of a building is measured from the mean level of the ground to the highest point of the roof. This amendment would change not the mean level of the ground, but it would say the mean level of the roof. So, it would slightly modify the zoning code. We did review this in the ordinance subcommittee. The building code has a similar definition to the mean average of the height, excuse me, the peak of the roof, and we also looked at a couple other surrounding townships, which also define it in that same way, so we felt that it would be an appropriate change. So, that, right now, we're just forwarding, because that's a change to the zoning code, it needs to be reviewed by both the Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any board comment?
Yeah, Madam Chair, and I think you said this, Erin, just my understanding is that we're essentially conforming our ordinance to be consistent with the definitions in the building code, and also with basically the definitions of most of the surrounding communities. I think this issue came up, if I'm not mistaken, when someone came in with a proposal, we're actually surprised to see that our ordinance deviated somewhat from both the building code and area, and other area municipalities, so we thought it made sense, and it's, we're only talking, it's a matter of feet difference, so we thought it made sense to conform it to both what other areas are doing as well as with the building code. Is that fair?
Yep, that is correct.
So, Ms. McPherson, I have a question. So, from a, you know, I realize that this is coming to us from one property development that someone wants to put in, and they want to get that property to be a few feet. Will this materially affect other development in the township, and does it also materially affect things like, you know, engineering, access, you know, emergency access, stormwater, anything like that, even if you're measuring it from the average rather than from the base?
Well, it wouldn't affect stormwater at all, because that is typically looked at as a, as you look down, it would be no increase in the impervious. It would slight, obviously slightly increase the height of buildings, because like I said, right now, we measure to the highest point. So, if you're now looking at the roof line, and you take sort of the average of that pitched roof, it, you know, you're going to have a portion of the roof peak that is now going to... that is now going to exceed what the height would be.
So from the point of view of, let's say, you know, putting in a ladder to evacuate residents, in the event of a fire, does it make a material difference, or does it not make a material difference?
I mean, it's a minor difference, because the height will slightly increase. But other than that, there should be no change in the building codes or any other review period, or review for the permits.
Thank you.
And one other thing that was noted in our discussion is that because, I mean, when I looked it up, every neighboring municipality has it defined the other way. And so some builders have their designs for a certain spec, and then can't build those in our township. So it's, you know, it makes sense to not, to conform with the other townships, if that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, it makes sense in this case. But otherwise, you know, the flip side is just because someone jumps off a building doesn't mean that we should follow.
Considering it doesn't match with the building code as well, you know, I agreed with this recommendation. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second? Okay, and that was board comment. Do we have any other board comment? Do we have any public comment? All right, come on up, state your name, and, sorry, I didn't realize it was Mr. Coonan. I don't know if you need to restate.
I don't know how many times I have to introduce myself. I'm going to change my name just for variety, I think, it's gonna, that'll be interesting.
It's just habit that I say it, and then I'm-
I know that. Richard Coonan, Chair, Trout Creek Watershed Residents Association. First of all, I'm going to thank you in advance for your indulgence. I have some things to mention, which I think might be valuable. I certainly hope they are. I'm going to suggest these ideas to perhaps even save you some time and save time on the part of the Planning Commission, okay? Now, I know your purpose is to decide whether or not to forward this motion to the Planning Commission, where it will go through hours of discussion and back and forth, and objections, and agreements, and who knows everything. You know the whole, you know that process, I know that. We've all lived through it. Regarding the cover letter, first of all, he wants, the applicant, the petitioner, wants to make the project, the ordinance, consistent, the township ordinance, consistent with those of other municipalities, and within its own body, within itself. Okay, fine, I suppose. But it's, the petitioner in its entirety is affiliated with Bentley Homes. Bentley Homes builds houses. The petitioner is the owner of properties of 1775 Nob Hill Lane in Peoli. The petitioner proposes to construct upon the property a single-family dwelling. The proposed dwelling will be designed with a peaked roof. Lots of houses are, that's not odd. But the point is, the petitioner appears to be concerned with a-